Thank you sir. Namanevarium, in the life divine, pailuvatharkaha, in nairathil, oru oru esamayathil, namanevarium kodasayavatharka saydulathakaha, Bhavanukum, Sriannikum, namadu nanriyum, vanakkatiyum, aurulathu porpadaangalil samarthipom. Nam pesham over vathayum, manadil thontram over ennatthayum, aurulakku nam kaaanikiyaga samarthipom. Anivarekum maale vanakkam. Namipoduthan life divine la, chapter eighteen, chapter padineel seventeen chapter la, the divine soul, adhanoodaya last paragraph, onthirukkrom, pona vara varikkum chapter, chapter seventeen li, pona vara varikkum, paragraph twelve varikkum number pathirundho. So, the, this is the paragraph thirteen, na irudhi paragraph. Nam nairadiyaha, the paragraph thirteen, athai padithum uruthivutte, and the synopsis la ontha ellamiya ontha, cover pandradhanala, namu synopsis ku poillam. So, number paragraph thirteen, aramikala indhadhavah, indharavaram. Uddhresan sir, padikringla chapter thirteen, paragraph thirteen?
Ah, yes sir. Paragraph thirteen. But, what will be the conditions in which and by which this nature of the life of the divine soul will realize itself? All experience in relation proceeds through certain forces of being, formulating themselves by an instrumentation to which we give the name of properties, qualities, activities, faculties. As, for instance, mind throws itself into various forms of mind power such as judgment, observation, memory, sympathy, proper to its own being. So, must the truth consciousness or supermind affect the relations of soul with soul by forces, faculties, functionings proper to supramental being? Otherwise, there would be no play of differentiation. What these functionings are, we shall see when we come to consider the psychological conditions of the divine life. At present, we are only considering its metaphysical foundations, its essential nature and principles. Suffice it, at present, to observe that the absence or abolition of separatist egoism and of effective division in consciousness is the one essential condition of the divine life. And therefore, their presence in us is that which constitutes our mortality and our fall from the divine. This is our original sin. Or, rather, let us say, in a more philosophical language, the deviation from the truth and right of the spirit, from its oneness, integrality and harmony, that was the necessary condition for the great plunge into the ignorance which is the soul's adventure in the world and from which was born our suffering and aspiring humanity.
Thank you sir, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you sir.
This is the concluding paragraph. This varikin the divine soul, divine soul ngadu, the human level keppadi in the human soul, irukindradha adheepala, supramental leveltha, irukakkoodiyan the nilaiyithaan, Bhavan ontha the divine soul inrue, in the chapter fulla explain pannik, in the fulla explain pannara. So, namunoodaya, mind levella paththo abhina, mind iknariya processesirukku. Adhum molemahata, in the mind ontha, adhanoodaya functioning ontha amindurudhu. In the Bhavan sallakoodiyan the judgment, observation, memory, sympathy, itallam. Itallam mindoda sabandappattu vishyengal, idan molemahataan, adhanoodaya functioning, mindoda functioning ontha amindurudhu. Appadirekkaile ontha, mind ontha, tiruvurum aathram adaintha, parinamamalakshiliya, and the supramental status adaintha pinbu, supramental status la ontha, and the super, supermind inoodaya functioning, yedan adipadaila, andha process, yedan adipadaila amindurukum. Athapatti Bhavan, oru kailvi erupikiraringa. And the kailvi erupiitte, ah, pradukke, enna sottara, in the questions kalan vidai ontha, life divine la, pinvarum chapters la varudhu. Aduktha, ipanamba athapakavendha, pinnadi pakalaa. Ipanamba edamathan thirunjikita podum abhina, life, divine life, adukkondu oru inriyamayada oru requirement, enna abhina, in the pelavupattu unaruvunneli, division in consciousness, namilakku kodiyan the pelavupattu unaruvunnelai. In the ah, namai thanithu parkum in the than unaruvunnelai, separatist egoism, either endo, nambo ontha, adhi vilakkum pakchathil tha, the divine life, satyam. Indha karthi namu ulle vaankila, abhinga oru karthodu in the paragraph amindurudhu. Nam explanation ku ulle polla namba.
Sir, nam padikitma sir?
Ah, padig, padig madam please.
The divine soul has to realize itself for its play in the universe. What are conditions by which it will realize itself? What we call properties, qualities, activities and faculties are the instrumentation by which certain forces of being formulate themselves. Through them, all experience in relation proceeds. For example, mind externalize itself into various forms of mind power such as judgment, observation, memory, sympathy, pro- proper to its own being. Likewise, supermind affect the relations of soul with soul by forces, faculties, functionings proper to supramental being. Otherwise, there would be no play of differentiation. Only by differentiation, one becomes mini. Thank you sir.
Thank you very much madam, thank you. Bhavan sallakoodiyan oru mukkemana karthi namu ulle vaankila. As for instance, mind throws itself into various forms of mind power such such as judgment, observation, memory, sympathy, proper to its own being, so must the truth consciousness or supermind affect the relations of soul with soul by forces, faculties, functionings proper to supramental being? Otherwise, there would be no play of differentiation. The supermind levella ontha, mukkemana namu thirunjikavand, thirundukkule vendi isu, adu ontha oru orumeyunnelayoda onrinaittha nilai. Ananal, adu panmukhatthanmeyilum yengakkoodiyavu nilai. Panmukhat, adu odya nookkamayadu tha. Enak, supermind odya nookkamayenna abhina, the orumakathanmeyliyandu panmukhatthanmayana andh, srishthiayuruvakudal. Appadi, panmukhatthanmayayuruvakukkulumburudhu, adhanoodaya functioning ontha, yippadi manam ontha sila manathanoodaya yekkangal, ontha, andh, yippadi ontha edai poodum, edai poodum thanmai. Observation, memory, itallam mirkindradha adheepala, the supramental levellyo, adhanoodaya sailvaadu amindurukku, amindurukka vendham. Adukkenne sila, adakku, adak, kinre, uruye, sila, amshangalai, adu kondirukka vendham, appadi, appadi, amayala abhina, the panmukhatthanmeyla adale sailbadamudiyadu. Athata, ningi Bhavan sullikindra. Ah, in the manathai, namu manathai poruthorikke paththo na, namu irukakkoodi nilaiyala, saha manudharakalooda namu, namuloodaya uravu amindurudhu. Manathin molemahata, namu aneththiemi parkindrum. Ah, adukkenre, manathir kenre sila gunangal irukindran, ah, sila amshangal irukindran. Adan molemahata, manam, madam, manam, thani sutriulla, sutriulla vatray, thanool vaankikulkindradhu. Adan molemahata, than, than, adu mattavradanana uravai, adu narathikulkindradhu. In the in the supermind paththo abhina, adu mandu, adhanoodaya uravu yippadi amayam indral, it will be a relation of one soul with another soul. Keer, namalodi manathinoodaya manathanla alavula yippadi amayindradhu indral, oru tanipattamanidhar, idnuudhu tanipattamanidhar. Ah, saha manudharakalukkullayana uravu, ngi manam than pradanamaha irukindradhu. The manam ontha merekkandamshangalai kayaalikindradhu. Edu indral, in the edai poodhal, judgment, observation, konray, konray uttrunookkudal, apra, memory, sympathy, itallam ontha, manathino, manathai ottiya sailvaadugal. Ananal, the supermind levella yippadi na, yippadi uravugal amindurukku abhina, namu yerknavi in the the chapter fulla paththo, it will be a relation between one divine soul with another divine soul. Appadita amindurukku anga uravugal. Ellamy ontha, orumakathanmeyooda than inandurukku, panmukhatthanmeyla than sailbadum. Anga onnestha, anga ontha dominating principle, divisionayirukkadu. Ah, appadirekumburudhu, adhanoodaya sailvaadugal ontha, edai ottiya amindurukku abhina, in the adhimana nilaiyutti than amindurukku. It will be, the functionings ontha, proper to supramental being. Adai ottiya amindurukku, appadi amayam pakchathil tha, in the differentiation, differentiation indral, onru palavaraga sailbutte, palve ramshangalai velipadutthu ra, adu than differentiation abhingarudhu. The difference, differentiation enginradhvaarthay ontha Bhavan ontha adikkadiyavu yavapaduthu, paduthvar. Adukka, namu yerknavi, namu kooriindadhappadi, in the division and differentiation, isarpoli vithyarsanava punjujukunno. Division enbadhu, namu odya manathin sailvaadu, onray onru, onrulirundhu onray paagupadutthu thudhu peripadhu. Divisive nature, divided consciousness, pelavupattu unaruvunnelaiy saandadhu. Ananal, differentiation amunkaradhu abhnikarayadu. Differentiation enna abhina, palve ram, palveer thotrangalirukku, ellamy onrakhataanirukku, ananal, onrulirundhu mattravagali, vevay ramshangalil mikadipadutthu kaattam oladanga, anga ontha divisionirukkaadu, differentiationirukku. Oru vadivathal ontha, oru amsham anga, anga ontha, meelongi kaanappadum, mattoruvadivathal, mattoruvamsham meelongi kaanappadum. Essentiala adipadaila ellamy onnu. So, in the differentiation, in the process tha ontha, mukkemana amsham, super, supramental functioning ontha, mukkemana function ontha differentiation. Manudharodaya mukkemana amsham ontha, division. In the differentiation, ifurudhu satyaminral, in the manudharodaya sailvaadu yippadi, vevay, sail ontha, vevay ramshangalin molemaha adipadaila amindurudhu, adheepala, supermind odya functioning so, adukkenre, pratyagamana, amshangalin molemahataan sailbattah vendham. In the karthi than Bhavan kooriindhar, pitpaadaskoodiindhar, ipantha amsham andaiyin, yevahayan amshangal molem ontha, supermind sailbadum. Appadingeradhu pathi, ipa pakavana, pinnadi pakalaa, appadingeradu oru karththa, pinnadi adhuta, portion of the paragraph la, oru Bhavan kooriindra. Adhuta part of explanation ulle polla.
We can see the functionings proper to supramental being when we consider the psychological conditions of the divine life. Presently, we deal with its metaphysical, that is principles which are beyond the physical, metaphysical foundations, its essential nature and principles. What is the essential condition of divine life? It is the absence of separate egoism and of division in consciousness. The presence of ego and our divisive mentality constitute our mortality and our fall from the divine consciousness. This is our original sin. Biblical term, Adam and Eve committed when they ate the forbidden apple from the garden of Eden. It means deviation from the truth and right of the spirit, from its oneness, integrality and harmony. By such deviation, the soul took a great plunge into the ignorance. It is the soul's adventure in the world. Suffering and our aspiring humanity was born out of this. It seemed amid a heavy cosmic crest, the torpor of a sick and weary world, to seek for a spirit soul and desolate, too fallen to recollect forgotten bliss. Intervening in a mindless universe, its message crept through the reluctant hush, calling the adventure of consciousness and joy. Savitri book one, canto one, sixty-one to sixty-seven.
Thank you. In the paragraph la kooriuladhu, Bhavan ontha yerknavi, ah, chapter seven la, the ego and dualities la, namu pathiruppu. Edunala ontha, in the fall in consciousness, manudharoodaya in the nilaiyik enna karano, abhingarudhu. Enna karano, adukka, anga ennamapaththo abhina, aneththiemi sachchidanandaavin velipadu, andh, ulakam, andh, ulakam ontha, sachchidanandaavin odya, sachchidanandaavin ah, molemaha eerpatthadhu, adhanoodaya amsham than, appadie, appad, appad, appad indral, yeenindha ulakathil, the maranam, thunbam, taimai, in the varambakul sailbadu, limitation, idu allam irk, irukkavendham. Appadingeradu kailvi erichindradhu, adarka enna karano indra, manudhar ontha, onudaya andh, conch, fall in consciousness. Ah, manudhar ontha, orumittu unaruvunnelailirundhu, the pelavupattu unaruvunnelaki, keerayavirundhu vidai indra, the diva, he is fall into the dividing consciousness. Adu tha, andh, once onudaya, manudharoodaya unaruvunnelai, keeravirundhu pinpadu, ellavidabanna irumayunnelaigalum, avan edurhollavendhi irukindradhu. Adu tha mukkemana karana. In the karthi than ontha Bhavan ontha, the ego and the dualities, yeen dualities varudhu, andh, andh, chapter, andh, chapter fullave, edunala ontha, dualities, manudhar ontha edurhollavendhi irukku, irumayunnelai galai, manudhar yedanala edurhollikindra. Adukka karana ontha, manudharoodaya fall in consciousness. Adhitan, in the, in the paragraphli, Bhavan ontha, andh, karthodantha ningamurikkindra. Aprontha, in the, namu yerknavi sonnamadri, ipa mudal, first portion of this paragraph la, Bhavan kooriulamari, enna namshangalin molemaha, andh, adhimanathin sailvaadu amindurukku. Appadingeradu, andh, andh, kailviyavandu erupi, iporudhu nam, adai parkavendham, pinvarum, pin, ontha, andh, andh, aspects ontha, pinnalala dealpanthu pathukla, abhing sottara Bhavan ninga. Iporuduke, namu eda, thirundukkule vendha indral, ah, suffice it at present, suffice it at present to observe that the absence or abolition of separatist egoism and of effective division in consciousness is a one essential condition of the divine life. And therefore, their presence in us is that which constitutes our mortality and our fall from the divine. So, idu tha, inga problem enna, andh, andh, prachinakallan ontha, molekkoor, enna indral, divine life oru pakka arukka, namulooda ilakkarikindradhu, nam vaadikindra vaadki ontha, adukka, edan nilaila irukindradhu. Nam in the nilailiirundhu, andh, devi, andh, deviha vaadki nokki sellavendham indral, enna, edukka molekkaranma arukakkoodiyan, in the than unaruvunnelai, separatist egoism. Adu mottrilumaha, nam vilakkavendham. Adheepala, nambadiyavunaruvunnelail pelavupattu nilaila arukku. Either endieme, nambo ontha, kandu ondo, ondu neendavi tha. Idai vilakkum pakchathil tha, namala, the deviha vaadki, nokki, nam sellamudiyam, indra Bhavan kooriindra. In the original sin, inra Bhavan koori, koori, kooripaduvadhu, andh, adu ontha, in the biblical term, ah, the Adam and Eve, yerknavi pathirukontha karthanamba, the Adam and Eve ontha, in the ah, garden of Eden. Anga ontha, andh, tadaisai petta, ah, apple, forbidden apple, adai, saaptona, anga ontha, keeray, tellapadikindrala, indra paththo. Idu ontha oru omayagathan Bhavan ninga kooripadikindra. In the, yedanala nam irukakkoodi, in the nilame iporudhu irukindadhu indral, nam ontha, the orumeyunnelailirundhu, keeravirundhu vittom, adhan karano ngia. Pelavupattu andh, nilaki, nam keeravirundhu vittom. Andh, orumeyunnelai ontha, yedanooda adipadaila amindudhu indha, the truth and the right of the spirit. Onmai, onmai, appanai yedi sari, the aanmija, adipadailaana, andh, sari, sari, sariyana nilai. Idu irandilime, nambo ontha, virundhu vittom, oru mozhumayathanmai, oru otthisayu, in the, isalayandhalan, nambo ontha, virundhu, ipontha, the maarubattan nilaila irukkrom. Ah, oru, yippadi ontha oru, kadalla poi, namu mozhukarama, adheepala, the ariyama, enkindradhu kadalla ontha, namu ellamy mozhukirukkrom. Mozhukindu, mozhukindu nilaila than, manudharoodaya aanma ontha, vir, vir, virundhullu nilaila irukindradhu. Ananal, adu avari illa, adovada thangidala, adu enna pannudhu abhina, meel, meel nokki, meel nokki payanithu varikindradhu, adu ontha oru sahas, sahasa sailaga, adu, sailindradhu, adu tha anga mukkyam. Bhavan, in the savitri lines la koda varikindradhu. Adu ontha oru adventure of consciousness tha. Ah, andh, andh, virundhullu, andh, manudharoodaya aanma ontha, meel nokki payanikindradhu, adu ontha oru sahasamaha than, adu sailindradhu. Adventure of consciousness, adu ontha magheyvoda than, adu sailindradhu. Ananal, in the nilaila, namu irukporudhala, idu taandi than, namu varikindrum, adu tha ontha, parinamamalakshiniyodaya, adhuta kattam, in the paragraph, in the chapter aramikirutthukmodale, Bhavan kooriulalar, enna, enna kooriulalar indral, nambo, ontha, andh, iravanoodaya, irakkam, adu oruparam irukindradhu, ananal, adu maathiram nam paththal, paththo, paththaadhu, manudharoodaya aanma vinoodaya, the iravanay nokki, eetram, ascent, adu tha nam focus pannanoo, abhingaradhu Bhavan, yeenindral, adu, adu la focus pannumborudhu tha, namblala, andh, oyernaila yedda mudiyam. So, idoora, in the paragraph thirteen, ah, nambo ontha, ah, murikkindradhu. Ah, paragraph, in the, in the chapter, idoora, murikkindradhu. Nam, this, this korthu, varada, karthikal thirundhu, thiruvikla, alate, namu synopsis ku ulle polla namba.
Sir, rangarajans, sir?
Ah, solung, sir.
Sir, ninga, pona, idhe, idhembodhu, ah, Agni ay pathi, Bhavan ontha, vivarama, kudilakuduthirukkara, rikyadathla, secrets of vedala, vinakshani, kudilunga.
Am.
Adapatti oru, lendre, karthikal.
Ah, solung, sir, please.
Adu la ontha, rikyadathla, mudal paadal, mudal vilie, Agni ay puhandhu paadukkara, paadal, atha rikyadashame aarukkida. Adu, vandu, Agni neele, Rohitam, Agneyasya, Devam, Rittijam, Hodaram, Ratnadhamam, abhingaradu mudal sloham. Veelveen, Rohidarum, Deediham aanavanum, Veelveen, Ejam aananum, Devarukkukku Ahudihalai eduppe chendru alippavanum, Perum Selvathai udayavanum ahiya, Agni Devanai, Valibadi Hirain, abhingaradhu rikyadathla mudal idhu. Ninga sonnamla, Bhavan ontha, secrets of vedala, rendu parta, prichindu, mudal partla ellathu, murichu, rendadu partla, in the Agnissukta thoda, ivatinaalu, ida pathi, remba elaborata, kodukkara. Pinnala ontha, aruada, remba, remba close, namu Nalina Ganda bookta, aru, idhala, idhala Bengali, idhala ontha, aruvarupadamana, ida otti, aru Bengali language la, idhu yajirukka, sir. Idu oru vishyavna, solung, ontha. Rendadu vishyavna, sir, ninga anki sonnapodhu, anki sonnapodhu, ah, anki, andh, savitri la, ida ottiya oru line varukku, araiyam, kudumisulidra. Adu ontha, book ten, sir, the book of the devil's delight, canto two, the gospel of death and vanity of the ideal, page, vandu, aranutti padinale, keyeendu, munavadu, varis. Page aranutti padinale, the gospel of death and the vanity of the ideal, book ten, ontha, the book of the devil's delight. Adhala keyeendu, munavadu, varis, sir. I cherish God the fire, abhingan varukku, sir. Andh, Bhavan, the savitri kaaviyathru, um, Panditji ontha, saaram, abhingeekkun, yedhara, ah, Thir, Danaseheran avarsal ontha, vara vara, mudal idhala, andh, aramichu, idu pandhu. Accidentally and incidentally, ninga anki sonnani, anki sayandramay, aru ontha, in the, rendadu kandatta, complete, aru, Tamil, vasukkumbo do, ah, Satyavan, yennekku, Agni Devanin uruvamaha than, varihira, abhingasulitte, ah, Panditji ontha, yajinadu, oru Tamil, saaram, sir, aru padikumbo do, idai exacta, adu, kudipik. I cherish God the fire. I cherish God the fire. Not God the dream. He wrote it. I cherish God the fire. Agni is coming. Saktiavant is coming. He is very happy. I just wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. You have said, the fire symbol. Fire has all its roles. It has inferior roles and superior roles. What is God asking us about the symbol? Agni is one God. But, its source is one divine. Divine is its source. But, different statuses exist. Lowest level exists. Highest level exists. This is what God is asking us. The supermind exists in three states. Triple status. One mental state exists. One mental state, then, a mental state. One mental state, a complete mental state. Then, a complete mental state. But, it does not change the state. This is the highlight. God is saying, fire is the place. Thank you very much, sir.
Sir, I have a question.
Say.
I ask you. This is the original sin. Suppose the original sin is not committed. Whether the part of the truth and right of the speech is avoided? You are talking about soul-to-soul relations. Maybe it could be maintained when the original sin is avoided.
Original sin is committed. Humans cannot see it. It is not seen in the separate mental state. All are in the mental state. The mental state is the reason for the original sin. His mind is missing. Missing is because of divine status. The world is not there. The world, the people, they are not there. If it is not done, it is not done. All are in divine status. Even if humans are seeing it, it is not possible.
Oh, very good.
All are divine beings. Humans are seeing it. Why should it be done? God is saying that. God is asking, why? It is simply delight. The earth, the man, is watching this. He is watching you, remembering you, chasing you. This is a chase. It is simply delight. Delight of existence. This is happening. The earth is in the same state. He is watching you, missing you, missing you. He is watching you, looking at you. Then, he is watching you. This is all a chase.
One more thing, sir. Between soul and soul, because the ego is not left out. It creates a lot of problems. There is no one soul like another soul. Because of the ego problem. We are unable to leave our ego whatever we do.
Soul-to-soul relations are on the supplemental level. In this state, the ego is completely there.
I understand, sir.
Now, we are in this state. There are no soul-to-soul relations between humans. All are in the same state. This is the difference. Naturally, the consciousness is divided. Then, until you are in the same state, there is a problem. Ego is the same state. There is no hatred. But, I am a single man. It is a problem until you are in it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
So, my question. When we split, is it a sin? It is not a mistake of the soul, right? It was originally intended by the divine. This is how it has to happen. Right?
Yes. That is why God has inverted the sentence. Of course, I don't think it is wrong to say this. It is a word of wisdom. We do not say it in Hindu.
Ah, in Hindu, it is the same.
It is not. That is why God has inverted the sentence.
He does not really mean it as a sin.
No, no, no.
It is not a sin.
It is not a sin. It is an invalidation. It is an invalidation of the divine. Divine invalids itself into ignorance willingly. And, that is what we are changing in other religions. It is not possible. Divine invalids. You are watching, missing you, missing you. You are watching, looking at you. This is a chase. Why should it be done? It is simply delight. That is the divine day of earth. It is not a sin.
Hmm, okay.
It is Hebrew language. The scripture says it. In the Hebrew scripture, it is written.
Hmm.
There is no concept. There is no concept. The sin, there is no concept. There is no sin here.
Okay.
One more question. In Hindu, Brahman, Illaram, Thuravaram, three say. If they are ill, it is a challenge.
Correct. There is no sin here. When we talk about the synopsis.
One point. In the last chapter, the first paragraph, reminds me. I read the instrumentation. We must measure something. First, we must know what is it. After that, we must develop an instrument. We must measure voltage. Then, ohm meter will measure the resistance. In this way, divine soul and supplemental, supermind and supermind beings, we need to develop a new sensory organ measurement facility to measure those next level of properties that are in the subtle world.
Exactly. That is what he is saying. That is what he is saying. On the supplemental level, the instruments of knowledge are useless. Is it? Now, we are using mind. We need different sets of... Ahm,... We need to use them. What is it? God will reflect it. The psychological aspects of it, God has explained it in the chapters. You need a different sets of... Fields. All are different sets. What is it? God explains it.
Thank you, sir.
When we talk about the synopsis, in the earlier session, we have talked about Satchidananda. But, we cannot realize it. It is not understood. It is not understood. That is the experience. It is not understood. That is what you asked me to ask. Another participant also said, surrender to the mother. It is a way. It is a good idea. After the session, another member called me. She shared it with me. She called me, said she knew something. This is the surrender. That is why the mother is the ultimate. If we are studying this, it is correct. Mother is the ultimate. She has a child. She has inspiration. She has a number of children. Every time we want to know something, the mother thinks about it. She knows it. Satchidananda, conscious, the mental state. How to know it? The mother thinks about it. It is clear to us. This is what I said. I am impressed. Because, God is saying that. God is saying, in this Purana, our aim is not to become a yogi or a sanyasi. Here, our aim is transformation. Change. What is the achievement? You have to hand over yourself like a child. In the arms of the divine mother. We should be like a child. That is the achievement. Because, all of this is an inspiration. It is difficult to achieve it. Inspiration is required. In the same way, the ultimate, the hero. It is the state of the mother. We will achieve anything. This is what you said. I thank you. In this time, we will talk about it. Then, another question, Satchidananda's. God has said, Satchidananda's aspects. When he reflects, delight of existence, the solution. Satchidananda has a chapter. What is he saying? Satchidananda, this is not possible. We should be in this state. Everyone is in the peace. The fault is always there. We should achieve it. Because, the intensity is higher. But, we should be in this state. Our state of consciousness is satisfaction. The sense of satisfaction. That is the delight of existence. That is the delight. That is why humans can't win. He is not strong. He is not strong. It is because of Satchidananda. We are not in this state. But, it is the reason. This is the reason. Then, another question, our participants. Our Lakshmi Madam. She asked. She asked. Krishna's state. She asked. Krishna is a... Ahm, he is a warrior. He is a warrior. How can he take various examples? Number one. Number two. God, why Krishna is the world? The warrior, male warrior, is needed for the battle. This is what they asked. She asked this question. I have sent the message to God's daughter. I share it on WhatsApp group. I am a member of the Sangha. But, it is important. I will talk about it in the Sangha. What is God saying? Krishna represents both a universal godhead and the immanent godhead. Universal godhead is a warrior. Immanent godhead is a warrior. That is why Krishna is the state of consciousness. He is in the warrior state. Then, Krishna is asking about the warrior. What is he asking?
In nineteen twenty-six, I had begun a sort of overmental creation. That is, I had brought the overmind down into the matter. Here on earth. I asked all these gods to incarnate, to identify themselves with a body. Well, I will bracket the story. Some of them absolutely refused. Well, with my very own eyes, I saw Krishna, who had always been in rapport with Shirobindo, consent to come down into his body. It was on November twenty-fourth. Krishna consented to descend into Shirobindo's body to be fixed there. It was only a participation from Krishna. It made no difference for Shirobindo personally. It was a formation from the past that accepted to participate in the present creation. Nothing more. It was a descent of the supreme from some time back. Now consenting to participate in the new manifestation.
What is God saying? In nineteen twenty-six, they got their warrior. They got their warrior. Then, they got their warrior. They got them. Then, many miracles happened. My mother told Shirobindo. Many overmental creations were seen. The world is full of warriors. My mother is excited. God is throwing away it. It is an overmind creation. With this, the warrior, you are popular. You can build a great mountain. But, we need supplemental manifestation. It is not necessary for overmind. The overmind creation is eliminated. This is one. The second one. What is needed? To make the journey of the divine. Supermind should be in the underworld. The overmind, the warrior. It should be in the underworld. It is the body of God. It is the body of God. They ask my mother. Krishna is cooperating. God Krishna is... Ahm, Shirobindo's body is made to build the world of the warrior. It is Krishna who is the one. Other bodies are not. What is my mother asking? It was only a participation from Krishna. Krishna is in his circle. He is destroying one of his. God, even if he is a warrior, there is no change. It is a supreme being. A warrior. ओर इरय सक्ति ओर पुदिया सृष्टिकाहे ओर सड़ा ओलखले तन्ने इरक्की कोल्किन्नर इदो वंदे अन्नाइनोडिया स्केटमेंट अदनाल इदो वंदे इदो वंदे एलामी वंदे डिवाइन प्लान ले नरंदा ओर विषय पर अदर्त केरली एन्ना केटंग अप्पडीना भगवान कृष्णर अवुंडिया तालम एर्वे अप्पडिंगर केरली केटर्नांग अदुके वंदे रम्बा तेरिवा इंगे भगवान सोल्किन्नर एन्ना सोल्किन्नर इनराल आई फॉलोवड हिम देयर और फाउंड माय अदावदे बियोंड पर्सनैलिटी डी मायावादीन सीस इंडिफाइनेबल एक्सिस्टेंस अदा द मायावादीनोडिया कोहिजले पत्ते अप्पडीना अदो इंडिफाइनेबल अदो विवरिक्के मुडियाद निले था अवुंग वंदे इरय निले था अवुंग वंदे उच्च निले अवुंग निनिकरांग अंदे निले इलम नाम वंदे कृष्णर पात्ता अप्पडिंगर आई फॉलोवड हिम देयर और फाउंड माय कृष्णा बियोंड इंडिफाइनेबल पर्सनैलिटी उच्चकट्टनिले इलम विवरिक्के मुडियाद विलक्कमुडियाद निले इलम नाम पात्ता अप्पडिंगर अदे पोले अदर्त वंदे इनोर भगवान वंदे करते सोल्किन्नर
कृष्णा इस नॉट डी सुप्रमेंटल लाइट डी डिसेंट ऑफ कृष्णा वुड मीन डी डिसेंट ऑफ डी ओवर माइंड गॉड हेड प्रिपेयरिंग थोनॉट इट्सेल्फ एक्चुअली ब्रिंगिंग डी डिसेंट ऑफ सुपर माइंड और आनंद कृष्णा इस डी आनंद मया ही सपोर्ट्स डी इवेल्यूशन थ्रू डी ओवर माइंड लीडिंग हिस आनंद
कृष्णर वंदे अधिमान ओली कड़ियाद इरुंदाल कोड अवुंडिया इरक्कम मौलमाग एन्ना नरकिन्नर द इनराल इंदे प्रिपरेशन नरकुद अधिमानत्तीन इर्दियाहा निघरकोडिया अदो सुप्रमेंटल डिसेंट अधिमानत्तीन वर्ग काहे द मेलमानत्तीन इरक्कम इंगे सड़ा ओलखले इरक्कम वंदे अदुकोंदे ओर मुन्नोडियाहा ओर प्रिपरेटरी निघजवाहा तयार से युद्ध निल तयार से युद्ध निघजवाहा इंगे नड़ी परिकिन्नर इदन भगवान इंगे कोरिकिन्नर अदर्त ओर केरली केक केटर्नांग भगवान टके करांग एन्ना केटरांग अप्पडीना व्हाय इस इट सेड डेट कृष्णा इस अन ओवर माइंड गॉड अप्पडिंगर ओर केरली केटरांग भगवान अदे मरकिन्नर इल्ल इन्नर
व्हाट वस सेड व्हाट वस सेड वस डेट कृष्णा आज अन मैनिफेस्टेशन ऑन अर्थ ओपन डी पॉसिबिलिटी ऑफ डी ओवर माइंड कॉन्शसनेस हियर तू मेन और स्टुड फॉर डेट आज रामा वस डी इनकार्नेशन ऑफ मेंटल मैन इफ कृष्णा वस अन ओवर माइंड गॉड थैट मीन्स ही वस नॉट अन इनकार्नेशन नॉट डी डिवाइन बट सम्बडी एल्स हु क्लेम तू बी डेट क्लेम तू बी डिवाइन थैट इस ही वस अन गॉड बट समोह ही वस अन गॉड हु समोह थॉट ही वस अन गॉड रिंडक चिन्ना गॉड ले चिन्ना फर्स्ट गॉड वंदे स्मॉल स्मॉल लेटर ले सोर्डर पिन्नाड़ी वरकोड़े गॉड वंदे परिया गॉड सोर्डर इदो एन्ना सोल्किन्नर इनराल कृष्णर अवुंडिया वेलिपाड इंदे ओलखले इंदे ओलखले अवुंडिया वेलिपाड यदि अद पुविक्के कोंडो वंदद इनराल इंदे पॉसिबिलिटी ऑफ ओवर माइंड अदा द मेलमानत्तनोडिया मेलमान उनर्विनले वंदे सड़ा ओलखले यरंगवदरका ना ओर सात्य कोर कृष्णर अवुंडिया अद मैनिफेस्टेशन वेलिपाड अदो वंदे तोटर वित्तदे एन्ना भगवान कोरिकिन्नर अदनाल वंदे भगवान एन्ना कोरिकरार इनराल कृष्णर वंदे ओवर माइंड अद तलकते सेर्न द कड़वुल इल्ल अप्पडिंगर अप्पडी ओवर माइंड अप्पडीना इरुंदुना अवर वंदे ओर इनकार्नेशन एरक्कमुडियाद ओर अनैत्तिम कडंद डिवाइनाहा एरक्कमुडियाद तन्ने तन्ने अनैत्तिम कडंद कडंद कड़वुल एंड सोल्लिक्कोडुम वेयर ओर कड़वुलाहा था न एरक्कमुडियम अवार इल्ल इन्गिन्नर सो इंगे भगवान एन्ना कोरिकिन्नर इनराल डी ओवर माइंड डी लेवल वंदे अद प्लेन वंदे कृष्णर इल्ल इन्नर दान कोरिकिन्नर अनाल अद ओवर माइंड कॉन्शसनेस द सड़ा ओलखले वंदे प्रवेशिपदरके अवुंडिया अद अवुंडिया मैनिफेस्टेशन वेलिपाड उदयपुरिन्दु एन्ना भगवान कोरिकिन्नर अद अद सात्य कोर अद एयरपट्टदा सात्य कोर अद एयरपट्टीदे एन्ना भगवान कोरिकिन्नर पर अदर्त केरली केटरांग अंगुट अवरयम कृष्णर ओपिट ते करांग अप्पोंदे रम्बा तेरिवा सोर्डर यू कांट एक्सपेक्ट मी तू आर्ग्य अबाउट माय ओन स्पिरिचुअल ग्रेटनेस इन कंपैरिसन विथ कृष्णा डी क्वेश्चन इट्सेल्फ वुड बी रेलेवेंट ओन्ली इफ देयर वर तू सक्टरियन रिलिजंस इन ओपोजिशन अरबिंदोइज्म और वैश्नविस्म ईच इंसिस्टिंग ऑन इट्स ओन गॉड्स ग्रेटनेस दिस इस नॉट डी केस अप्पडिंगर अदावदे एन्नोडिया आन्विह अद मेन में यम कृष्णर अवुंडिया आन्विह मेन में यम ओनरोन वंदे एदराहनी वंदे ओपिट मुडियाद अप्पडी ओपिट अप्पडीना इरण्ड विद मदंगले ओपिट वस मारियाद आयोड अदो वंदे इंगे वंदे अद वंदे उन्मय कड़ियाद अप्पडिंगर पर इनोर केरली केटर्नांग और देन व्हाट कृष्णा आई मस्ट चैलेंज डी कृष्णा ऑफ डी गीता हु इस डी ट्रांसेंडेंट गॉड हेड परमात्मा परब्रम्मा पुरुषोत्तमा डी कॉस्मिक डेथी मास्टर ऑफ डी यूनिवर्स वासुदेवा हु इस ऑल डी इम्मानिंट इन डी हार्ट ऑफ ऑल क्रिचर्स और डी गॉड हेड हु वस इनकार्नेट अट ब्रिंदावन और द्वारका और कुरुशेत्रा और हु वस डी गाइड ऑफ माय योगा और विथ हुम आई रिलाइज्ड इडेंटिटी इदो वंदे पर इनोर करते सोल्किन्नर ऑल डेट इस नॉट तू मी समथिंग फिलासोफिकल और मेंटल बट डी मैटर ऑफ डेली और ओवरली रिलाइजेशन और इंटिमेट स्टफ ऑफ माय कॉन्शसनेस इदो रम्बा तेरिवा कोरिकिन्नर भगवान एन्ना कोरिकिन्नर इनराल कृष्णर अवुंडिया निले पात्तो अप्पडीना मुन्ने निले इलम इंडिविजुअलाहू रुकिन्नर उलहम तर्विया अद प्रबंजन निले इलम रुकिन्नर वासुदेव अंद अंद निले वंदे प्रबंजम तर्विया रुकिन्नर अनैत्तिम कडंद उच्चकट्टनिले इंदे ट्रांसेंडेंट लेवल रुकिन्नर परमात्मा परब्रम्मा पुरुषोत्तमा इदलामे वंदे हाईएस्ट लेवल कॉस्मिक लेवल इरुक्के ट्रांसेंडेंट लेवल इरुक्के इंडिविजुअल लेवल इरुक्के सो न एन्द कृष्णर वंदे नाम वंदे पोर आराम मुडियम मल्लक निक्कमुडिया अप्पडिंगर और देन व्हाट कृष्णा आई मस्ट चैलेंज अप्पडिंगर अनाल इंदे इप्पो वंदे तेरिवा आर्कनिकर वंदे केरली वंदे कृष्णर वंदे अद मेलमान कड़वुल अप्पडीना अंग तेरिवा भगवान कोरिपडिकिन्नर अप्पडी इल्ल कृष्णर वंदे एन्ना निले इलम रुकिन्नर केरली निले इलम वंदे उच्चकट्टनिले वरके रुकिन्नर अवुंडिया इंदे मैनिफेस्टेशन इंदे ओलखत्तल अवुंडिया मैनिफेस्टेशन यदुकोंदे उदयवाहिकरमाह इरुंदु इनराल इंदे मेलमान उनर्विनले वंदे सड़निले इरक्कम कोल्ड अदरकाहे अद वंदे उदयवाहिकरमाह इरुंदु इदो वंदे एदरक मुन्नोडियाहा आमिन्ददे इनराल पिन्नाल वरपोकिन्नर अद अद सुप्रमेंटल डिसेंट द अधिमान इरक्कम अदुकोंदे ओर मुन्नोडियाहा अदको अदको उदयवी से युद्ध काहे एयरपट्ट एयरपट्टपट्ट ओर प्रिपरेटरी वर्क अदवाहा था न इदा मिन्द इंदे करतीम अंगोड़ा परंदुकोले विरुम्बिकिन्नर
सर
थैंक यू मिस सर थैंक यू रम्बा तेरिवा आर्कन्नर
ओके
थैंक यू
सर फेयर पॉइंट्स कोल्ला मस्त अंगराज
आ सोल्ल
अरविंदर वंदे ओर साधहर के एविदिन बदलोड़ा सारामसम सर इदो वंदे वॉल्यूम 35 कलेक्टर वर्थ सास्त्री अरविंदो पेज नंबर 431 ले एकदर रिकर्त इफ यू रिच कृष्णा यू रिच डी डिवाइन इफ यू कैन गिव योरसेल्फ तू हिम यू गिव योरसेल्फ तू मी किंटेसंस ला नानो अवरो ओन्नु दांगर इंडायरेक्ट आ सोर्डर
आम आम
इफ यू रिच कृष्णा यू रिच डी डिवाइन इफ यू कैन गिव योरसेल्फ तू हिम यू गिव योरसेल्फ तू मी
आर्थमान अद वंदे यार कना नम्मलोडिया चपकला नोडिया नेरंड नन्नरोत्तर अवर आश्तमतिले सेरर सेर वंदे अवुंड किन्दा कॉन्फ्लिक्ट वंदुद अवर वंदे ओर कृष्णा बक्तर अवुंड अवर पेयर वंदे प्रसाता समथिंग पेयर एक्साइटम भरंद बोच अवर वंदे कृष्णर अवुंड किन्दा कॉन्फ्लिक्ट वंदुद नाम वंदे कृष्णा बक्तर आच्छन नाम वंदे एप्पडी एन्ना वंदे अंगुल्ट पुरणम ओप्पडिकरदे अप्पडीना अद था अदके अद
बदल
पुरुषोत्तमन एलानेले रिक्के बिंदिगरा, all levels से कृष्णा कॉन्शसनेस रिक्के बिंदिगरा
Okay sir, thank you, thank you.
Sir
Thank you very much sir.
मगेश योदि, अवर भवन जीता पोस्टर दुर्गा, कृष्णा सचिदानंदा नहीं पास
Ah yes, naturally, अंदर भगवान वड़ी करतोड़ा अदर उठ्तर पोलीया
Yeah.
Sir, इप्पन नीके सोना देतांग सर, तमिल रिक्कुद दे मटु पढिकितिंगलांग सर
पढिङ मैडम, please पढिङ
श्री आरविंदरुम कृष्णनुम, आन्मनिलायिल नान पेरियवड़ा कृष्णड़ा एन पदै पट्टी नान विवेद विवादिप्पेन एंट्री एदरवारक कोडादे, वायनवम आरविंदत्वम एन इरु समयंगल इरुंदे अवै ओबवंड्रुम तन्तन कड़वुले पेरियवन एंट्री, वादित्तु कोंडिरंदाल तान इम माद्री ओर केल्विके इडमुंडे पोरुलुंडे, अप्पडी ओण्र इल्लई मेलुम एन्दा कृष्णोड़ नान पोट्टी इडुवदे, गीताइल नाम कान्गिन्र परमात्मनाई परम ब्रह्ममाई, पुरुषोत्तमनाई, सर्वेश्वरनाई, अहिलांडनायकनाई, वासुदेवनाई अनैत्तु उयरगलिलुम, अंदरियामिया युल्ला कृष्णोड़या, अल्लादे ब्रिंदावडत्तिलुम, धारकैलुम, कुरुसेत्रत्तिलुम, अवधारक कुर्सना इरुंदवड़ुम एन अद्योगत्तिल वालिकाटिया इरुंदवड़ुम, नान ऐकियम अड़ैंदवड़ुमान भगवान वड़ना इवैयल्लाम एनकु वेरुम तत्तुवम कर्त्तु अल्ले, नालदोरुम, नालिकैदोरुम अनुभविप्पदे एन उनरोड़ वोट्टियदे, तिरके एन्दा निलायिलुंदे नान इंदा विवादत्तिल तिर्पु कुर्वदे, एक्स नान कृष्णाइवड़ा पेरियवन एंट्री कर्तिकिरान कृष्णाइवड़ा पेरिदे एदुवेय इरुक्कमुडियादे एंट्री नी कर्तिकिराई, सरियो तवरो ओबवर्वरकुम, तनकु सरियंट्र तोंटिकेरा कर्त्तु कोंडिरकुम उरिमयुंडे इंदा विवादत्ते अथुड़ा मुडित्तु कोललाम, डियर क्रिन सर
Thank you ma'am
रम्बा प्रमाण
नान थिंग सर
निंग एदर्यन देडिंग आदे अंदर, इदो वंदे, आलिन्या मैगासिन तमिल लाल वंदरकादे
यदि योगम बाहमुंड सर, आरविंदर लेटरसन योगा लाल
Ah okay, okay, लेटरसन यापाल ताद वरुदा
Amaang, amaang
तमिल लाल वंदरकादे
Amaang, sir, तमिल रिक्कुद सर, बाहम ओण्र रंटु मूणु न
Okay, okay, okay
सर, राजिला ओण्र राजु सर, अप्पर इन्नोडु नवंबर 24 कृष्ण तूल उनरुनुल इरंगियनाल, कृष्ण अधिमान ओली सुपरमेंटल लाइट अल्लन कृष्णी निरक्कम मेलमान इरेवनी निरक्कम आकुम, अदुवेय अधिमानम आणंतम इवट्टीन इरक्कम आकादे, आनाल अवै इरंगा वाली सय्युम कृष्ण आणंतमयन, मेलमानम ऊलम, अवन उलग परिणामत्ते तांकी अदय आणंतत्तिक नडत्तिकिरान
Super madam, रम्बा नाला रिक्का, रम्बा आपका कोड पंड्रिंग
नान थिंग, नान थिंग सर
Thank you, रम्बा नाला, निंग तमिल लाल पट्टी रम्बा नाला रिक्का ने एल्लार्कुम पुरीय आउदे, इन्नो नाला पुरीय आउदे, thank you
नान थिंग सर, नान थिंग सर
Thank you very much sir, रम्बा तड़ीवा रिक्कं सर
Okay अन्ना सिनॉफ्सिस उल्लपोला नंबर, सिनॉफ्सिस वंदे रंडरंडे पॉइंट्स अप पढिकिला नंबर, उल्लपोला
Sir, नान पढिकितमा
Sir, नान पढिकितमा
माइकली मैडम, पढिङ, आदु, पढिङ
Sir, नान पढिकितमा सर
Okay sir
पढिङ
Okay The concept of super mind gives a home basis of philosophical reasoning and precision to the idea relating divine life, it justifies our hope and aspiration by the very nature of the world, of our own cosmic path and the inevitable future evolution The world has come out of the divine reality, it must inevitably return to the divine How we must change to bring divinity in our nature and in our life We must shift our focus from the divine in its descent into our limited nature to the divine in its ascent out of our limited nature to its own proper divinity, thank you sir
Thank you, thank you, the super mind अदनोडे कांसेप्ट वंदे रम्बा तेरिंजित्ततनाल एन अद प्रीवियस मुन चैप्टर वंदे सुपर माइंड बत्ती तान बखवान प्रेसनार The triple status of super mind पातो, the supreme truth consciousness पातो the super mind the creator पातो, इदेलामी वंदे एन्ना कोरिकरान्डर भगवान वंदे ओर divine life अप्परिंगरदे एन्नांगरदे पत्ती, ओर तत्त्वरीधियान ओर, ओर पुरीदले नमकु वारंगियदे मुख्यमहा भगवान एन्ना कोरिकरार एन्नराल, अद वंदे नम्मुड़िया आस्पिरेशन नम्बिक्कै आरो, इदय वंदे, इप्परके कोड़िया उलगसूनियले वैथे न्यायपड़त्तु दाहामिकिंदते एंडिकिंदर, एन अद एन्ना पुरुचिन्न अप्परिना इप्परकर उलगत्त अवचीटन नंबर वंदे सु, divine life, सातिमा अप्परिंगरदे एल्लार्कुमे डाउट वंदरो, आनाल, the super mind अद तेरिंदु कुल्लोदन मोलमहा अनैत्तु कुरैहल लिमिटेशंस कोडया तपोदिया उलगत्ती निलाई, अदेपोल नम्मुड़िया कडंदहालम, नम्मुड़िया उलगत्तीनुड़िया फरबंचित्तुन्डे कडंदहालम अदेपोणर, इंदा परिणाम और रच्ची, नुड़िया ओर तविरक्कु मुडियादे ओर इलक परिणाम और रच्ची एदे नोकी सिलिकिंद्रदे, इद मूणरीमे नंबर वंदे इंद मूणरीनुड़िया अडिप्पडेला पातो अप्परिना, नम्मुड़िया नम्बिक्कैयो नम्मुड़िया आरो वंदे, सुपर माइंड अदनुड़िया अदेपत्तिया सरियान पुरिगल वंदे न्यायपड़त्तिकिरंददे एन्नराल, एंट्री भगवान कोरिकिंदर, एन अन्नराल इंद नंबर वंदे ओर तनी, तनिया पातो अप्परिना, नमकु वंदे नम्बिक्कैये कड़े इरकादे एन अद उलगम वंदे ओलमोस्मा रिक्कुदे, इद एप्परिवंदे हायर लेवल कुपो चांसले नान निपो, एन ओलम प्रश्नेगल रिक्के अप्परिना, आनाल the super mind एदन एन्नर ओड़ि रिक्किंद्रदे, अदनुड़िया सैल्बाड़तान निंग नांग अदनुड़िया वेलिप्पाड़ातान इंद उलगम अमिंदुलदे, अदे नोकी तान अव पोइकिट्रो अप्परिंगर ओर, तेलिवान पुरिदल अमंजत्स अप्परिना नम्मुड़िया उलगम वंदे एन्ना दाओर मोस्मान निलायले रिक्कान सरी नम्मुड़िया कडंदहालम, एवार इरुंदालुम सरी, अदेपोल नमक एदरहालम एंदे एप्परिपो किंद्रदे नम्मुड़िया तेरियादे, आन इद एल्लात्क मतिला नमकु वंदे ओर नम्बिक्कैयो ओर आस्पिरेशनो, इरुक्कमुडियम एन्नराल, अद इंद सुपर माइंड मोलमहा तान इरुक्किंद्रदे एंट्री भगवान कोरिकिंदर, इरण्डावतिंग एन्ना कोरिकरान्डर, इंद उलगम एन्बदे इरै मेमम, अद निर्लिंदु दान वेली वंदुदे इप्पन वंदे अंदर नंबर, अदिले नान वंदरकुन तेरिदे, बट नाम एन्ना सय्या वेंटुम मेल नोकी सिल्वदरके एन्ना सय्या वेंटुम, नम्मुड़िया अंद ओर एल्लेकुट्ट पट्टा, ओर निलायिले इरुंदे, नम्मुड़िया येल्विले इरुंदे एप्परिन नंबर वंदे इरै निलायिले नोकी, नाम वंदे उयंद सल्ला वेंटुम इंद केल्विवंदे, आदुत्त केल्विया आगे एडिकिंद्रदे इदय तान कोरिकिंदर, आदुत्त पोरा नंबर
Sir, नान पढिकितमा
पढिङ
This difference of movement from descent to ascend involves a difference between the life of gods and the life of man The gods have never experienced the fall, but man has plunged into the life of ignorance In his recovery from fall to rise, he carries within him the riches of his experience accumulated from his acceptance of that descent all The divine soul has not descended into the ignorance by the fall of spirit into matter In its consciousness, it lives in the original truth of things, in inalienable unity like the divine existence itself But by the play of divine Maya, by the distinction of the comprehending and apprehending truth consciousness It enjoys both difference and unity with God, it embraces both difference and oneness with other divine souls, thank you sir
The इरकत्तिल इरुंदे नाम, अंद असेंट अदनुड़िया, अद नोक, नम्मुड़िया सैल्बाड़ एप्परिअमय अमयवेंटु मिनराल नाम अंद इरै तन्मी नोकी, मेल उयर्लु सल्ला वेंटुम एन नंबर के कोड़िया निलमलाल द केल्यरिकिंद्रो, द केल्यले इरुंदे मेल नोकी सल्ला वेंटु इंद इद एदय वंदे, सुट्टिकाटिकिंदते एन्नराल, the life of gods, द कड़वुलरगल अवरकुड़िया निलक्यो नाम रिक्के कोड़िया निलक्यो, द कड़वुलरगलुड़िया निलमी वंदे भगवान एन्ना कोरिकरार एन्नराल अद वंदे अवरु ओरय निलायिले इरुक्किंदर अवरकुड़िया निलायिवंदे, केल्यरंद विलई, आनाल मनिदरुड़िया निलायिदावंदे इप्पोर वंदे अवनुड़िया आन्मा वंदे ओर, केल्यरंजिया निलायिले इरुक्किंद्रदे इंद मनिदरु वंदे ओर अरियामयले वंदे मुझूदम्मा हारियामयले इरुक्किंदर, अनाल अवनुड़िया इंद, recovery from fall to rise केल्यरिंदे, मेल एरुम वंदे, अद इरुंदे वरकोड़िया मीट वरुदल रिक्किया अद मोलमहा अवनुकु उन्नतमान अनुभवंगल किट्टिकिंद्रद अयतान भगवान कोरिकिंदर रिंग, अद वंदे, अद वंदे ओर वेचूट्ट निलाया इरुंदालुम कोड अवनुड़िया, अंद मींटू ओरु मयर्चीले वंदे, अवनुकु वंदे ओर अत्पोधमान अनुभवंगल अवनुकु वंदे किट्टिकिंद्रन इंद, इंद, इंद अनुभवंगल वंदे, अवनी, अवनुड़िया, अवनुड़िया मयर्चीया मेलुम मेलुम वालुपड़त्तु दाहा अमयिंद्रन, भगवान कोरिकिंदर, अप्पर वंदे, इंद Divine soul वंदे, इप्पोर दमी वंदे, अद केल्यरंगो दिलई अद नम्मुड़िया मनिदा आन्मा दावंदे, हारियामयले इरुक्किंद्रदे अद वंदे जड़, जड़, जड़ निलायिकुल, तन्नी मरित्तु कोंडो ओर अरियामय एंगिंद निलायिले मनिदरुड़िया आन्मा इरुक्किंद्रदे, आनाल इंद divine soul वंदे मेल इरुंदा निलायिल्दान इरुक्किंद्रदे, अदनुड़िया ओरिजिनल कांसिट, अदनुड़िया अदनुड़िया उनरुन निलायले पातो अप्परिना, अद वंदे अंद उन्मयोड़ वोट्टियुल वोट्टियुल निलायिले पिरिक्कमुडियादे निलायिले इरुक्किंद्रदे इरै पेयर उनरुडन, उन्मय, उन्मयोड़ वोट्टिया निलायिले अद इरुक्किंद्रदे आनाल अंद, the divine Maya, अदन मोलमहा, एन अद वंदे सुपर माइंड अदनुड़िया अद वोट्टिया अम्सम, अम्सम महयाल, अदकु वंदे, इंद वन्नस रिक्कु, ओरमय निलायिया रिक्कु, अदेपोल, अद पन्महत्तन्मयले यो रिक्कु रंडी निलायिलिमी अद वंदे, अंद ओरम, ओरमय, ओरमय तन्मय एरु एरु दुविदाद Difference, it embraces both difference and oneness with other divine souls मत्र, इंद divine souls, अदनुडनान, अंद ओरमय, मत्र पन्महत्तन्मय इद इरण्डीमी अद, अंद निलायिल्दान इरुक्कु इदला मुख्यमन नम्मु गवनिकिवंदि द एन्नम एन्नराल, the divine soul वंदे तन्नी केल्यरिक्कु दिलई, इरुंदालुम कोड, अद वंदे पन्महत्तन्मयले इरुक्किंद्रदे अंद ओरमहत्तन्मयले मिरिकिंद्रदे, इरण्डीलिमी अद वंदे, अंद, अंद वन्नस अद अदुड़िया अडिप्पडी पातो अप्परिना, अंद वन्नस with the supreme, oneness with the god आदुत्त अदक पोरा नंबर
पढिकितमा सर ना
पढिङ, पढिङ
The divine soul would be self-contained in this conscious play of sachidananda In its being, it would be a pure and infinite self-existence In its becoming, it would be a free play of immortal life It would not be involved in the darkness of our material being, nor doubted by ignorance Nor would it be subject to death and birth, it enjoys pure bliss unaffected by desire and ego In its consciousness, it is a part of the infinite truth It would not be limited by any poise it assumes in its relations with others When it accepts a purely phenomenal individuality, there would be no loss of self-knowledge So is the case when it accepts the play of practical knowledge, practical differentiation in multiplicity In its self-experience, it would live eternally in the presence of the absolute, thank you sir
The divine soul, एप्परिया, एन अद, divine soul वंदे एदय वोट्टी अमयिंदा ओर अम्सम एन्ड सचिदानंदाविवोट्टी ओर अम्सम, अद वंदे, अदनुड़िया अम्सम एन्नम एन्नराल, अद वंदे Pure and infinite self-existence, ओर अनंतमान ओणराहुम, पवित्रमान ओणराहुम तान इरुक्को अद वंदे, अंद सचिदानंदाविक्ती इरण्डे निलायिले इरुक्किंद्रन ओण्र, वेलिप्पाड़ाद निलाय, being, वेलिप्पडुम निलाय, becoming अदेपोणर, the divine soul कु इरण्डे निलायिकल रिक्किंद्रन, ओण्र वेलिप्पाड़ाद निलाय अद वेलिप्पाड़ाद निलायले वंदे, अद अनंतमान ओर, ओणराहु इरुक्कु अदेपोल, अद पवित्रमान ओणराहुम इरुक्कु, वेलिप्पडुम निलायिले वंदे पातो अप्परिना एप्परिरुकुन, अद वंदे ओर, the immortal life, free play of immortal life अद वंदे ओर अर्जविल्ला ओर, ओर सास्वदमान ओर निलायले दान इरुक्कु अद वंदे वेलिप्पडुम निलाय, निलायले कोड, ओर सास्वदमान निलायिले इरुक्कु नम्मुड़िया मनिदरुड़िया आन्मा पढिकड़ियादि, मनिदरुड़िया निलाय एप्परिरुक्क मनिदरुड़िया निलाय वंदे, ओर तरकालिक तोटरंगलाहतान वरिकिंद्रदे, आनाल इंग या पातो अप्परिना The divine soul वंदे, ओर immortal, ओर सास्वदमान वार्विल दान अद तनुड़िया अदुड़िया वेलिप्पाड़ अमयिंद्रकु, अदेपोल, अद वंदे जड़ उलगले इरुक्के कोड़िया इरुलीले वंदे, तन्नी मरित्तु कोल्लाद अद इप्पोल, हारियामयलुम तन्नी मरित्तु कोल्लाद अंद पिरप्पू इरप्पू इदकलावंदे, अद तन्नी उड्पड़त्तिकोल्लाद अद वंदे, इप्पोर दमी वंदे, ओर तुईमयान अंद, आनंदत्तयदे इप्पोर दमी अनुभवित्तवार इरुक्कु, इरुक्कु, एन अन्नराल, अद वंदे, मनिदरु, मनिदरु, मनिदरु बाधिकुम अंद the desire and ego, आशयगल तन्नुन तान एंगिंद उनरुन निलाय इद, इद अदक कोडियाद, इद इदनुड़िया बाधिकु वंदे अदक दिवाइन सोल कु कोडियाद आनाल इद इप्पोर दमी अंद प्योर ब्लिस, अद अनुभवित्तवार इरुक्कु अदनुड़िया उनरुन निलायले पातो अप्परिना, अद अनंतमान उन्मय ओर पगदियागतान इरुक्कु अद एन्दवेदमान निलाय पड़कुन एडुक्ला, एन्द निलाय पड़कुली यो पाते अप्परिना एन्द निलाय पड़ो अद वंदे अद एक कट्टुपड़तद अदनुड़िया, अम, ओर, तन्नी वंदे, ओर वेलिप्पड़त्ती ओर सैल्बाडुम निलायले ओर तनी, ओर तनिप्पट्ट अरेवले ओर सैल्बाडुम निलायले इरुंदालुम कोड, अदकु वंदे, अंद स्वय न्यानम, अद वंदे इप्पोर दमी इरुक्कु अद तन्नी एरुंदुविदाद, इंद पन्महत्तन्मयले वंदे, अद एरु बट्टालुम कोड अद, अद इप्पोर दमी अंद, 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 स्वय न्यानम, the self-knowledge अद इप्पोर दमी तन्नुल अद वैथेरुकु, अद वंदे, अदनुड़िया इप्पोर दमी एदल इरुक्कु मिनराल, इंद अब्जोल्यूट, the presence of the absolutes अद एदयमे सार्बट, एदयमे सार्दिराद निलाय, सार्बट्र निलाय अवार अरतान अदनुड़िया अनुभवंगल अमिंद्रकु, एदयम सार्द अमिंद्रकाद अंद मनिदरुड़िया निलायिन पातो अप्परिना, नम्मु एदयम सार्द तान इरुक्किंद्रो अंद दिवाइन सोल अप्परिला, अद वंदे, it would live eternally in the presence of the absolute एदयम सार्दिराद निलायल्दान अद इरुक्कु आदुत्त इरण्डिक पोला नंबर
पढिकितमा सर
पढिङ
It would be aware of its immutable existence as the original self-form, svarupa of the transcendent, sachidananda It would be aware of its play of conscious being as manifestation of that in forms of sachidananda The presence of the absolute would be the very foundation of its being, both in unity and the differentiation It would be present both in its timeless self and in all moments of time and in its spaceless being and in its extension in space It would be present both in its relationless state, beyond all causes and circumstance and in its relations to circumstance, condition and causality, thank you sir
The divine soul पातो नम्मु एकनाई पातो, इद वंदे ओर सचिदानंदाविन अम्सम दाद सचिदानंदाविन अम्सम तान एन्बदे अद इप्पोर दमी उनंदिरुकु अद तान मुख्यंग, तनुड़िया सैल्गल अनैत्तिल्यो, अद वंदे तनुड़िया स्वयरूपम सरूपम अदु एदु एन्नराल, तान वंदे सचिदानंदाविन ओर वेलिप्पाड इद पत्ती अद मुत्रीलुम अंद उनरुन निलायिले इरुक्कु, अंद उनरुन निलायिले इरुंदे इप्पोर दमी अद अंद उलरुन निलायिले इरुंदे वेली इप्पोर दमी वंदे विदाद इद ओण्र, इरण्डावते, अदनुड़िया अडिप्पडी, एदन अडिप्पडेल अमिंदुलदे एन्नराल इंद सार्बट्र तन्मय, एदयम सार्दिराद अंद अब्जोल्यूट अद तान वंदे, अदनुड़िया फाउंडेशन, अद वंदे ओरमय तन्मयलुम सरी, पन्महत्तन्मयलुम सरी अदनुड़िया फाउंडेशन, अस्तिवारम एदन पातो अप्परिना, the absolute मनिदरु रिक्के कोड़िया निलाय वंदे, ओण्र ए सार्द इरुक्किंद्रो आनाल अंद दिवाइन सोल वंदे, अदनुड़िया अडिप्पडी, एदनुड़िया अडिप्पडेल अमिंदुलदे एन्नराल अंद अब्जोल्यूट, अब्जोल्यूटनेस वंदे, अंद, अंद अवेयरनेस ऑफ़ अब्जोल्यूट वंदे अदनुड़िया पलवेर निलायिले यो रिक्कु, अद वंदे ओर कारत्त कुट्टु सैल्बाडो कारत्तक अप्पार्प्पु सैल्बाडो, अदेपोल, ओर एडत्तिकुट्टु अदुड़िया सैल्बाड़ रिक्कु एडत्तिक अप्पार्प्पु, दाद, बिटिन, बियोन स्पेस, इल्ल स्पेस कुल्ल अदेपोल, बियोन टाइम, बिटिन टाइम, इंद, इंद एला निलायिले लिमी, अंद अब्जोल्यूट अदनुड़िया अस्तिवारम वंदे, अडिप्पडी वंदे, अब्जोल्यूट अदन पेरिल्दान अमिंद्रकु अदेपोल, अदनुड़िया, अद वंदे, सूर्ण निलायले सार्द निलायले इरुक्कु, सूर्ण निलायले साराद निलायले इरुक्कु सुन, यन, it would be pre- present both in its relationless state beyond all cause and circumstance and its relations to circumstance, condition and causality ओर सूर्ण निलायले सार्द निलायले इरुक्कु, सूर्ण निलायले साराद निलायले इरुक्कु एन्द निलायले इरुंदालु, अडिप्पडेल अदुड़िया अडिप्पडे एदन पातो अप्परिना इंद एदयम सारा निलाय अंद अब्जोल्यूट, इद तान वंदे अदनुड़िया फाउंडेशन सो इरण्डे कर्त्तिकलिंग भगवान सोलिकिंदर, ओण्र, तान इप्पोर दमी सचिदानंदाविन वेलिप्पाड़ एंगिंद उनरुन निलायले दान इरुक्कु, इद मुदल कर्त्तु इरण्डावता कोड कोडिकर्त्तु, अदनुड़िया अडिप्पडे वंदे, इंद अब्जोल्यूट अदनुड़िया अडिप्पडेल दान अदुड़िया, अदनुड़िया निलाय, एन्द निलायले इरुंदालु इंद, इंद, अब्जोल्यूट, अदनुड़िया प्रेसेंस ऑफ़ द अब्जोल्यूट अद तान वंदे ओर अडिप्पडे तन्मयाग, अदनुड़िया सैल्बाड़ ले लामिंद्रकु
सम्मानितमा सर
पढिङ सर, please
The divine soul would live silently in the one self-concentration and the many self-extension, the two terms to the eternal sachidananda Since our human mentality is divided, we find the incompatibility between the one and the many But the divine soul could not be bound by the duality The divine soul in a due thing is the move of the truth consciousness It is in the awareness of the consciousness of the one and the many At the same time, a one holding innumerable multiplicity in itself and the multiplicity as the extended consciousness of the one The real Advaita is unity, the opposing term of the one and the many
Thank you, sir, thank you. The divine soul is ......... It is ... The Eham. Eham is self-concentration. Many is the absolute. The absolute is the self-extension. These are the same things. The nature of man is ............... I do not know the absolute. But the absolute and the absolute are the same things. They are in the same shell. These are the two elements of Satchidananda. The elements of Satchidananda are ... One is ......... The elements of Satchidananda are ... The divine soul is alive ever since. The nature of us is ............ One is ......... One by one, we cannot make a difference. But the divine soul is not like that. Divine soul ... It will not be bound by this duality. The absolute is not affected. The second is, as God said. When we see the divine soul, ........................... The divine soul, the super mind, truth consciousness, is the source of the divine soul. Because of that, the inner and outer shell is ... Consciousness of the one ... And the many at the same time. Both the two elements are in the same shell. Because ... The one is ......... One holding the innumerable multiplicity in itself. The same way, the absolute is ... Is extended consciousness of the one. The absolute is the absolute. These are the same things. The third is, as God said, ... The real Advaita. The real Advaita is ... One is ..................... But in the ......... One by one, the unity, the oneness, is one. The absolute is ..................... But the real Advaita is ..................... They are the same. That is the real Advaita.
Good morning, sir.
Yes, please.
The divine soul ... Will be aware ... Of all variations of being, consciousness, will ... Satchidananda ... At the extension ... Of that self-concentration, concentrated unity, developing itself ... Not into division ... But into ... An extended form ... Of infinite wonder. The divine soul ... Would consider ... All variations ... As extensions of the one, the absolute. Everything that is contained potentially ... In the absolute ... Itself. The word from the nameless silence, the form realizes ... The formless essence, the active will ... From the tranquil force, self-awareness ... Emerges ... From timeless ... Self-awareness. And the eternally ... Self-conscious being ... In a becoming ... Take the shape of ... Self-conscious existence ... And the joy ... And loud queen ... From the eternal ... Delight.
Thank you, sir, thank you. The divine soul is ... Because we see all these ............ Variations. We see all these variations. The variations are ......... Later, the ............... Later, we see them. Other ones are seen. Because of that, the variations are ... Divine soul is ..................... Satchidananda is the consciousness will delight. The oneness is ........................... Other ones are seen. They are not seen by other ones. The absolute is ...... This is one. The second is ... The variations are ... The absolute. The ... Divine soul would consider all variations ... As extensions of the one and the absolute. So, all the elements of the elements ... Later, the absolute is seen. Because of that, the absolute is ......... That is the ... The word is ...... Silence is the word. The same way, ............ That is the absolute. When it rises, it is seen. The same way, a calm shell ...... Because every absolute status ...... That is the absolute. The calm shell is ......... But how we see it? We see it only through the elements. We do not see the calm shell. That is the absolute. That is what we see. But the divine soul is ......... The absolute, the absoluteness, is seen. It is not seen. The elements of the elements ............... All things are ... A manifestation of the absolute. The absolute is seen. Next.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, please.
We regard the three voices ... As three grades of super mind ... Based on our mental perception. But the divine soul will be aware of them ... As the three in one ... Fact of the self-manifestation of Satchidananda. Vast comprehensiveness, that is brhahat, is the foundation of two consciousnesses. Therefore, the divine soul ... Would embrace these three voices in one ... And the same comprehensive self-realization simultaneously. The divine soul perceives all existences ... As sole forms of the one. It sees its own relation ... With all other existences ... As conscious forms of him ... In his own infinity. It sees all the individual existences ... As the individual divine ... In each divine and supreme dwellings. It does not see each ... As an illusory part of the whole ... But as a whole in the whole, a truth ... That repeats the infinite truth. Thank you, sir.
The super mind is ... Three elements are seen. We see them in the mind. But the divine soul is ......... Because ............... The truth consciousness. The foundation is ... The truth consciousness. That is the divine soul. The truth consciousness is ...... Vast comprehensiveness. Comprehensiveness. The complete self. The vast comprehensiveness. All is contained. The absolute is the divine soul. Because ............ That is ......... Is seen. The second is ... The ... The soul forms. All things are ... The Eham. The self. The self. The self. The elements are ... The Eham. The Eham is the self. All the elements are ... The complete self. The self. The self. The self. The elements are seen. They are not seen. All is the complete self. The same way, ...... The elements are ...... The self. The self. One by one, it is ... That is the self. The self. The self. The self. It is not seen. One by one, it is seen. The self. The other 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 self. It does not see each ... As an illusory part of the whole ... But as a whole in the whole. The other self. 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 What is it? The divine soul is ... The holistic perception. How we see it? The self. But the other is the self. Next.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, please.
The three status of super mind ... Are the three aspects of the one existence. The first status is based on the self-knowledge, the self-becoming all existence. As described by the Upanishads, basis of our oneness with all. The second is ... Based on seeing all existence ... In the self basis of our oneness in difference. The third status is based on the self-inhabiting ... All basis of our individuality in the universal. It is the defeat of our mentality ... Which compels us to focus on ... Any one of these aspects of self-knowledge ... To the exclusion of others. The essential character ... Of the super mind is ... Comprehending oneness and the infinite totality. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, madam, thank you. We saw the three elements. As God says, ..................... The first status is ... The self-becoming all existence. One ...... This is ............ The oneness with all. The one is the one. That is the first status. Self-becoming all existence. Self-becoming all. The second is ... Seeing all existence in the self. The self is the self. We see it. This is ............... We see it. The absolute. That is the absolute. The third is ... The self. The self. The self. Self-inhabiting all. That is the basis of our individuality in the universal. The elements are seen. But even if they are seen, it is the self. This is the one. We saw it before. The ... All as Brahman. We saw it. It is the one. It is the one. It is not changed. All as Brahman. This is one. The second is ... All is in Brahman. All is in Brahman. The third is Brahman is ... All is in all. These are the three elements. We see it. We see it. We see it. The three elements are ... The super mind is ... The three elements are seen. But ... The nature of man is ... The three elements are ... We see it. We see it. We see it. That is the nature of man. But the super mind ...... The syrup. What is it? The complete oneness. Comprehending oneness. Because of that, it is ... The complete self. The self. The self. It is not changed. The syrup is seen. Next.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, please.
Assuming the divine soul taking its center ...